I would help us, I am really depressed.
I will call a seven o'clock meeting to order. The city council to recess to the city conference, city council conference room to conduct a closed session in regards to real property relative to the liberation of the purchase, exchange, lease, sale or value of real property under section 551072 of the Texas government code. And to conference with the city manager and staff to discuss and deliberate commercial financial information received from business prospects the city seeks to have locate, stay or expand in the city and deliberate the offer of a financial other incentive with which businesses the city is conducting economic development negotiations under 551087 of the Texas government code. We'll reconvene in about thirty minutes, 7:30, and take any necessary action.
The council is returning from an executive session that began thirty minutes ago. Mr. Rumbolo, any action of the council?
Yes, Your Honor. We would request a motion to approve a purchase and sale agreement with Kubota, consistent with our discussions in executive session, and authorize the city manager to execute same and to take all other necessary action.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
And second, any discussion? Not all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Completes the executive session. Mr. Chairman, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, we'll begin with the seven-thirty meeting. Call to order, the invocation and pledge, Commissioner Beth Peglier.
Everyone pray please. Loving and gracious God, in this holiday season, we know that you are the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you for all your blessings. We seek your wisdom and guidance, be with us in our deliberations, and help us make wise decisions for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. All glory be to you, loving God, now and always. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our meeting tonight, last of the year, I guess. We have six public hearings advertised between the Planning and Zoning Commission and the council, and then the council has its agenda. So, we will begin with the joint public hearings. We'll declare the public hearing on each case. We'll give the staff an opportunity to announce the request that's been made, then we'll give the applicant their time for presentation. Anybody present who'd like to speak for or against any of these applications will need to register with Ms. Brooks. She will call on you in the order that you have registered. After the public hearings, the Planning and Zoning Commission will meet in a separate meeting, and will discuss the merits, make recommendations to the council. They're on the council for final actions at the end of our agenda. So, you're invited to be a part of our government tonight. We'll begin by opening the public hearing on CU twenty-four dash forty-seven. Ms. Maronic.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, Chairman and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. This first request is a conditional use permit to revise the previously approved conditional use request for an automotive dealership with sales and service of new and used vehicles. This request is specifically to add three electric vehicle charging stations to the site. The subject property is located at one thousand one East State Highway one fourteen, and contains approximately sixteen point eight acres. The property is also zoned PCD, planned commerce development. Two of the proposed electric vehicle charging stations will be located to the west of Building Three, as shown on the site plan, while one will be located to the east of Building Three, adjacent to an existing Level Two charging station that is already existing on-site. All use-specific standards found in Section forty-two subsection I, electric vehicle charging stations of the zoning ordinance, are met with the proposed layout. No additional changes are proposed to the buildings on-site or the layout of the site. The applicant, Mr. Albert Alvarez, with Genslers here this evening, to present and answer any questions the commissioner and council may have.
Good evening. Okay, as you can see, the diagram's there, we have two Level Three DC chargers going to the west end of the property strictly for inventory due to increased production of electric vehicles and the Cadillac brand. To the east, there will be an additional Level Three charger added to pair up with existing Level Two.
Questions, Mr. House?
No questions.
Questions from the council? Apparently none. Thank you very much. Do we have anyone wishing to speak?
No, Your Honor.
Do we have any correspondents?
Yes, sir.
Need a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? None opposed?
The Planning and Zoning Commission has voted to close the public hearing. Motion from the council.
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? The public hearing is closed. On item four, we have a request to table. Is that right?
Yes.
Is that going to be right? All right, we'll open the public hearing on CU twenty-four dash forty-eight A. Ms. Maronic.
This is a request for a conditional use permit to amend the previously approved site plan associated with the conditional use to allow the sales and rental of heavy machinery and equipment. This request is specific to one monument sign to be located at the northwest corner of the lot, at the intersection of Texan Trail and Wall Street, to exceed maximum height and effective area, requirements found in Section sixty, signs of the zoning ordinance. The applicant is asking to table consideration of this request to your meeting at the January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five meeting. Staff recommends that the City Council and Commission consider the applicant's request to table.
Mr. Chairman.
You've heard the staff and the request of the applicant to table till January twenty-first, twenty-five. Their motion?
Move to approve the tabling of the CU twenty-four dash forty-eight till January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five meeting.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
The commission has voted to table the motion from the council.
We table.
Second.
It's tabled to what date? January twenty-first? Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, that's part of the motion. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is open on conditional use twenty-four dash five-three. Erica Maronic.
This request is for a conditional use permit to amend the previously approved site plan associated with conditional use ninety-eight forty-four for a planned commercial center in conjunction with a grocery store. The subject property is located at four thousand William D. Tate Avenue, and contains approximately eight point nine acres, developed as a multi-tenant building. The site is also zoned CC Community Commercial District. The applicant plans to revise the floor plan of the former grocery store to transform it into a sixty-two thousand square foot fitness facility. The facility will feature an open exercise area equipped with stationary exercise equipment and free weights, five indoor pickleball courts, five rooms designated for group exercise classes, and it will also feature a plunge pool, a children's play area, tanning rooms, and locker rooms. No exterior changes to the building and site layout are proposed with this request. The applicant, Mr. William Davis, who is the owner's representative, is here to present to you this evening, as well as Mr. Kenneth Herring and Bill Dahlstrom, who are also here this evening to answer any questions the commissioner and council may have. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is William Davis. Want to first start off by thanking Mayor Tate, City Council, and the Planning and Zoning Commission, who has helped us throughout this process. Special shout-out to Anna and Garin on the Economic Development Department, who have been a godsend through this process. A little bit about us, Pine Tree is the minority owner in the shopping center. We own nine shopping centers in the DFW area, in addition to the other Tom Thumb anchored center on the other side of Grapevine. Majority owner is a company called Slate Grocery REIT. They're publicly traded Canadian REIT on the Toronto Stock Exchange. Their ticker is SGR for any curious. Significant in the name, grocery there. The slide above is a laundry list of grocers that I think most people here would be familiar with. This is the list of grocers that we targeted to backfill the Tom Thumb location. There's no secret to us that the City of Grapevine's preference would be a grocer. It was ours as well, especially majority ownership Slate Grocery REIT, who only owns shopping centers with grocers in them. Just a list, a few of the named brands, Kroger, HEB, Market Streets, Rouse, Trader Joe's, Walmart, Aldi, et cetera, et cetera. The two we got closest with were Aldi and Trader Joe's. And even with the incentives that the city was offering, both tax rebates and tax incentives, every single grocer on this list passed. Which leads to why we're here today. So, the proposed tenant is Club Four Fitness. We had the same situation happen to us at a shopping center in Flower Mount. We had a Tom Thumb vacate on us. We backfilled them with Club Four Fitness, which kicked off the relationship. Subsequently, we signed another deal with them at an asset that we own in Knoxville, Tennessee. From twenty-nineteen to today, they've gone from seven locations to forty-three, and are rapidly expanding. Kenneth Herring in the crowd here is their business development director, so any questions specific to Club Four, I'm sure he can answer for you. Last slide that I have here is our site plan. I just want to stress that there is no change in the site plan, no change to the building envelope, no change to the building elevation, no changes to the parking, no changes to the landscaping, photo metrics, et cetera. They're taking the space as-is, and everything is in place since we bought the property in twenty-fifteen. In closing, since we lost the Tom Thumb at the center in April twenty-twenty-four, we've lost two tenants at the center. We were fortunate to backfill the Wendy's and the Outlet with a concept called Black Sheep Coffee, who is here tonight. Very excited for them to open in Q-one of twenty-twenty-five. And we have a number of tenants that have expressed their concern at the center due to the lack of anchor. It's no secret that the City of Grapevine would prefer a grocer. Pine Tree owns and operates a hundred and twenty shopping centers across the U.S., exclusively retail. We're experts in this space, and we don't think this box will ever be a grocer again. It's our opinion, highest and best use is a fitness user, and we think it should be Club Four. So, yeah, just wanted to thank everyone for their time tonight, week before Christmas. Thanks for having us.
I have a question for staff. Erica, forgive me if I'm missing it, but I don't, I'm not finding anything about parking, like if the parking requirements have changed?
So, the parking requirements for a fitness center are based on the occupant load, so it would be one space for three occupants, so they would need, how many is the total?
It's actually on the site plan, required is three hundred and twelve.
Okay.
Three eleven is required. There's four hundred and twelve onsite.
Okay, great. And then I have a question about the club itself. Based on your other locations, about how many people do you have, like between the eleven PM, five AM period of time?
It's very limited. We keep them open twenty-four hours as additional amenity, but it's pretty limited traffic during that timeframe.
And what's the situation with onsite staff and security?
We typically don't have additional security there. And then currently, during twenty-four hours, we don't have staff there at our current locations. We've just, the locations we go to, we just have not had any issues there.
So, you just like swipe a card?
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's a access that you do through your phone and app.
Is there a number? Like, if I was in there alone at two in the morning and somebody else came in, that would make me kind of nervous. Is there like a, I used to be a member of Anytime Fitness, just up the road, and that was the same thing, and it was very small, and I really wouldn't have wanted some unknown guy to come in. And I think they had a number, which didn't make me feel real safe, but...
Yeah, what we've done currently is everything's covered, other than the locker rooms, with a, you know, camera system, so everything's recorded, and then...
Is anybody looking at it live?
No, not live, but it, you know, they can reference back to it. And then the, you know, like women's locker rooms, et cetera, they have like keypad access on them. So, that's how we've handled before. We've never had an issue, you know, across, you know, forty-three stores and several hundred thousand members and...
What kind of staffing do you have just during busier times?
I mean, it depends on the time, but it's, you know, I would say these locations probably are going to have ten to twelve full-time staff, and then probably fifty or sixty total staff. The excess staff is group training people, personal training people, group class, you know, so some of it, they're coming in for their personal training sessions, group training sessions, and then class sessions. And then they're there during those times, and so they're paid during the times that they're there, and then, you know, so that's kind of how that works.
Is there an onsite manager responsible just for this location?
There is, yeah. Yeah, there'll be, every location has a GM, an assistant GM, and then we have regionals over them that manage up to five locations each.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
On the pickleball course, are those reserved, or is it kind of first come, or do you have a combination of?
So, they'll be, they'll be open to the membership. There will be a upgraded membership that we sell for the pickleball, and then those members will reserve it.
Have reserved?
Right. And that's actually, you know, with this location being, you know, sixty-four thousand feet, which is a pretty big fitness center, this will be one of the first that we're putting that into. But should be a good, you know, additional amenity for, you know, the city and stuff. Pickleball's becoming pretty big, and this will be a membership-based facility versus, you know, a fee-based facility, so...
Will y'all have like any kind of nutrition?
Kirby, we can't hear you. Could you speak a little more into the mic?
Will y'all have any kind of nutrition center in there, as far as like shakes and, you know, pre-workouts and all that kind of stuff?
We will. They won't be, so a lot of those will be, you know, like branded and pre-done, and then we also have, you know, supplements and stuff like that that we sell.
Just resell?
But as far as like food and beverage-related preparation, we don't do any of that. But you would have, you know, all your protein shakes, supplements, protein bars.
But nothing like handmade, like mixers and stuff like that?
Correct. That's correct.
Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
I didn't see an elevation page on here, so the exterior, are you changing anything on the exterior with signs, or, I mean, how do y'all?
So, no aesthetic changes, but there will be a signage package that gets submitted.
Okay, thanks.
Erica, I have one more question. The four hundred and twelve parking places, that's for the center, correct?
Correct. There's seven other suites within the building on the lot.
Are there any vacant suites? Are there any vacant properties there besides?
Based on what was provided in the site plan, not at this time, no.
That's all the questions.
I have a couple of questions. May I ask, oh, sorry, thank you, Mayor. The parking for fitness is not more than for a grocery store, is it? I mean, there's adequate parking.
There's adequate parking, yes.
Okay, and then, let me just say, I miss 24-hour, not being open 24 hours a day, because I don't sleep, so I would go there at 3:00 pretty frequently, so I appreciate that you're going to be open 24 hours myself. The only other question I have is, are you here as the owner? Because you mentioned the owner, but on the application, it has a different, it says Heritage Heights. Tell me, explain that to me, please.
Sure, so I work for a company called Pine Tree.
Right.
But every shopping center that we own has its own legal entity.
Okay, now I understand. I was just confused. Thank you.
Sure.
That's all I have, Mayor.
And I have a question. In terms, I think you said that you had another location in Flower Mount that had previously been a grocery store, is that correct? And then changed, you changed over to this?
Correct. So we bought a portfolio in 2015. It was eight Tom Thumb shopping centers on the DFW market. This is our second Tom Thumb that we've lost in that time period. So the first one, we backfilled with Club Four, which kicked off our relationship.
Right. And I know their fitness centers are pretty popular around, at least after Christmas, for the first part of January, everybody decides to get into shape, and so they're pretty popular. But, but that's been four or five years now, so what has, there's no secret, we did want a grocery store, so. But, having this entity come in, what's been the success of that changeover from a Tom Thumb to the fitness center in the last three or four years? What, what do you say?
They pay their rent and taxes, so that's...
That's what matters.
Yeah, that's all that matters.
Yeah, that's helped quite a bit, and I think it's a top five location for you over there.
Good. Okay, well, thank you.
And this one's number seven in DFW. So out of the 43, seven of them are here.
Okay, very good.
Well, I appreciate your recognition that first, our preference was the grocery store, but, you know, pragmatically, that's probably not going to happen, so this is the next best, you know, highest best use from what the current market would dictate. So, thank you very much for kind of laying that out.
Absolutely, and again, just Anna and Garen have been super helpful. We've been talking for the last 10 months. They've been interviewing grocers on our behalf, offering tax incentives, and with all of our firepower, we can get one in the door.
It looked like you've gone down the whole list and more, so, well done.
This isn't a question as much as just a little bit of concern. Obviously, in Grapevine, we want all of our merchants and establishments that come in restaurants to be very successful. I mean, it's important that we have a good partnership, and that we're really upfront, honest, and we work together on things. You know, I gotta be honest with you, I'm a little concerned for you. I mean, there's no rec center in this whole metroplex like our rec center. I mean, we have 52, approximately 52,000 residents in our community, and over 20,000, 20,000 of those are members there. You're not going to be able to compete against our prices, and our facility is incredible, and we're about to expand it. I mean, there are a couple of fitness centers down the street in Colleyville. Colleyville is building their rec center as we speak, and so I just think that you need to think about what you're doing. I mean, it's great you're getting a tenant, but we also want you to be successful, and we don't want it to be empty. I just hope you really did do your homework coming in here, because we want it to have parking out there, and we want to have cars out there, we want to have people going in and out of it. But the truth is, is that we got a pretty good rec center here in our own community that offers probably more than what you're offering here, and I don't think you're going to be able to compete with our prices. So, I don't know if you've looked at that, but just something to consider. And I know you're probably going, be quiet, but the truth is, is that's the truth. So I don't know if you have anything to say on that part.
So, I mean, we did do our due diligence on it. We feel like we have a niche in the market. We've, we have, we've done 43 to date. We've never had one not work. Certainly hoping this one's not the first. Y'all do have a nice rec center, and, you know, they're certainly going to take, you know, a fair amount of the community here, but we've always been able to, you know, find our niche in the market and compete, so we, we don't feel like there's, and, you know, we've competed against rec centers in a lot of these markets. So, we feel good about it. I think we'll feel, you know, at least part of the fitness niche share in the market. Certainly, you know, while Will may not appreciate it, I mean, I appreciate your comment and concerns, but I do feel like that the city will, I know y'all prefer the grocery, but I mean, these are super nice fitness centers, very competitively priced, and I do think that it'll be well-received by the community and be a value add for y'all citizens, at least we feel like.
And I just want to add, the rec is obviously very successful. Mr. Lael's right, and it does really well. But I think having an alternative, something to offer in this part of town is important, because we have a lot of people...
Being on the south side, you're right. I said, you're right, being on the south side really helps.
Yeah, we have a lot of people that live down there, and you'll pull from other nearby towns too, and I'm not concerned about the rec not surviving. The rec's going to do just fine, so we have one of the highest memberships in the country relative to citizens, so. But I think having something like this, we've been trying to work on having some more things in that part of town, because so much is in north of 114. Getting chicken and pickle has been a big thing for us, and I think having you there is going to be a great addition. So, I understand the concerns relative to your success, but I'm confident that with the amount of money you're going to spend, you've done a lot of work to make sure that you feel comfortable that it will be successful. So, I'm excited to see you come.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And obviously, we were, I mean, obviously, we're behind you. If you, if everything's approved, we want you to be very successful. I mean, there's, that's what we want.
No, sincerely appreciate the comments very much.
Just to echo what they said. I mean, our rec is, our rec is very successful. We love our rec, but it's not the right fit for everybody. I do think that, I'm excited to see this dormant facility come alive again, and I think there is a, there is a place for you in this community. I don't think, I don't think, public-private's always good. It's good competition, and I think they all thrive together, so I'm excited about this, so.
Thank you. But that was our consensus on it as well, so.
I think the fight for the shopping center is underway, and it's been underway for a year. You worked very hard to save it. I think you ought to have the flexibility to do what you feel like's best to do that. I think it's in our best interest, and the city, yours too, to try to get an anchor there that can save the whole facility and everybody else not move out. So, you know, it's a tough economy. A lot of things working, but y'all are in the business of running shopping centers, so I'm willing to give you the benefit of the doubt.
And this is probably going to generate more business for the massage place next door, right?
I like that footplace. I go there all the time.
Anything, any other questions? All right, thank you all very much. Do we have anyone wishing to speak?
Yes, Your Honor, I have one speaker. Tim Dickinson, 402 Boyd Drive.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, Planning and Zoning. My name's Tim Dickinson. I'm a part-owner of the Black Sheep Coffee, that, in that same shopping center, we're putting in, in the abandoned Wendy's there. And it's absolutely important that we do have an anchor there. And I do a little development on construction companies, roofing companies, and several other businesses, so we're absolutely agree with the trend and that the cannibalization of grocery stores, there's nothing you can do about it, it's just happened. So, we're going to have more of these centers across the United States that will be abandoned by the grocery stores. So, as far as I can tell, and I travel the country extensively, own a national equipment rental company also, so I'm in all 48 states every year, and I've watched the trend in Portland, Seattle, New York, everywhere. There are not a lot of fixes to the grocery store business, cannibalization, you know, where they leave these empty buildings. And the trend nationwide is to put these fitness centers. And we've found throughout the country that the look is good, the traffic seems to be higher end, and the stores, they keep the maintenance up on the stores, so. So, we absolutely need that anchor there for the benefit of our business too, and we're also planning on possibly putting in two or three more of those Black Sheep Coffee centers within the Grapevine area. So, I appreciate the affirmative approach y'all are taking to, to consider this for them. So, we're absolutely in favor for it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you much. Anyone else?
No, Your Honor.
Have any correspondence?
Yes, sir, there's one letter of support in front of me.
Mr. Chairman.
We need a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Commission closed. Motion from the counsel.
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Public hearing is closed. I'll be abstaining on item six. Mayor Protem.
I'm going to open the public hearing for conditional use permit CU 24-54 Bull Lion Ranch Winery. Ms. Erica Maronic.
This is a request for a conditional use permit to allow the possession, storage, retail, sales of on- and off-temas consumption of alcoholic beverages, wine only, in conjunction with the winery. The subject property is approximately seven tenths of an acre and located at 150 West College Street. It is also presently zoned CBD Central Business District and developed as a 17,000-square-foot single-story commercial building. The applicant is requesting to open a wine tasting facility in the existing 1,100-square-foot suite. The floor plan includes an open-concept wine tasting room with a wine bar to the east of the main entry. It will also feature a 212-square-foot private wine tasting room at the back of the suite. Total proposed number of seats within this area are 37, which require 16 parking spaces. The total number of parking spaces for all 12 tenants within the building is 152. The multi-tenant building has a total of 47 off-street parking spaces onsite, which are shared among the 12 tenants, occupying the existing building and the tenant in the building directly to the east of the site. The applicant has provided a shared parking agreement with Black Tire to the south for 25 parking spaces adjacent to the site. No other changes are proposed with this request to the exterior site layout of the property. However, the applicant is providing and proposing, proposed elevation changes that will enhance the general outlook facing south towards College Street. This concludes my presentation. The owner, Mr. Nandu Madredy, is here this evening. He has prepared a presentation, and he's available for any questions that the commissioner or council may have. Thank you.
Good evening. Mayor Tate, Mayor Protem, Free, Mr. Coy, Mr. Collectors, Khalil, yourself. I'm not sure it's fun to be here again, but it's been a long time, and I'd be remiss not to thank Bruno and the city attorney, as well as Erica and the staff at P&amp;Z for allowing this opportunity to speak before you again. This Khalil, I forgot to mention you as well. So thank you for the opportunity. I also need to apologize for not being supportive of my proposed tenant. He's been slaving away in Grapevine for about four years, and I'll tell you a little bit more about him, but I wasn't here at the last hearing, and I feel badly about Without going too far down memory lane, the picture on the left is what 520 South Main Street used to be 13 short or long years ago, before I purchased it. I was no commercial guy with deep pockets. I was just your average dough in the corporate world with kind of shallow pockets, but with your help over the last decade plus, that's what we've turned it into. We've got Farmer's Market there, we've got Jake's, and Judy Pie is kind of the anchors on Main, and a lot of mom and pops. There are a total of 11 tenants there. We've survived COVID. We've got the tenants, you know, with rent abatements, everything to do to get them through that, and I'm happy to say there was only one tenant that could make it. But, at the same time, I'd like to mention that the west, the 150 West College side, has been an issue, because it was predominantly office before. It was a perfect fit. We had a great tenant, Prime Lending, Plains Capital Bank, but post-COVID, when the lease expired and work from home had kicked in, they didn't continue, and that was understandable. So I've spent money, subdivided that space into three suites. I have one tenant that's been there for a while. A photographer is doing well, but I've had some rotation through the other spaces, and it's been difficult there, which is why, when Chuck approached me from just 30 feet away, we kind of talked and said, Chuck, let's see how we can make this work. But again, I have to thank you for helping me or we get to this point over the last decade or so. And the cooperation hasn't just been on the building alone. I've worked with the city on, when a sewer line needed to be rerouted, it was five feet from the corner of my building. It caused settlement issues, which I dealt with, and on and on, but that's the spirit of cooperation we've always worked with, and I appreciate the council for everything you've done to bring us to this point. Speaking of Chuck, my regret is perhaps you didn't have enough bagged on Chuck. He comes from a farming and ranching community, a family. He's been an active member in Grapevine before moving here four years ago by participating in Grape Fest. They've won 11 gold medals. His winery has won 11 gold medals. He's the president of Cross Timber's Wine Trail, which encompasses Grapevine and the surrounding areas. He's working on the Cross Timber's American, how do I say that?
American Dairy Cultural Association.
With Texas A&amp;M, to kind of put our region on the map. He's working with Texas Grape Agriculture, and that was successful, and get some radio advertising for, again, our area of the world. He's a de facto wine ambassador of Grapevine, and he's been in this, in the current location for four years, and he's kind of between a rock and a hard place together with me, because he's got no place to go, and we've kind of been extremely committed, spent a lot of time, money, and effort to, to try and get him to move to my location. So fundamentally, the box there says Chuck is active and is invested in remaining in Grapevine. Anything you'd like to say, Chuck?
Please go to the microphone.
This time, I'm coming with hat in hand. All right? We tried it the last time, it didn't work. We made some changes, and significant changes, and the plan worked, y'all planned to deny me the first time, it worked, because he's putting more into it. And that was important to me as well, and I think we can make a go at it, but we need your help in order to do it. We want to stay in Grapevine, and I think we can make this, this location work. We can. All right? Well, thank you.
All right, so what are the changes Chuck talked about? We listened, I listened to the hearing, we talked to some of you to get your feedback. So fundamentally, we felt the deck was an issue the last time around, for a couple of reasons. The seats and potential creep, but also that it took away three parking spots, so we've removed the deck. So that adds three seats, three parking spots back to that location, and they'll be dedicated to Chuck. Those are spots that are in my building. And it reduced the seats by eight. And to give you a comparison, the current seats that Chuck has at his current location are 34, and the seats at this location will be 37. But he gets three additional dedicated spots that he didn't have before. Secondly, Chuck was able to work with Black to get a shared parking agreement, which essentially allows Chuck to have access to the Black parking after hours and over the weekends. And if you look at it just from 30,000-foot view, it's less than 30 feet from where Chuck is at today. The other thing that I picked up... The other thing that I picked up on was the facade wasn't appealing. And I agree with you. And actually, if you look at the rendering I showed of my, other side of my building, it's just been tough to put the money in it, including doing the build-up. But we will do that, given approval today, to upgrade the facade, make it more attractive, give it, give it more appeal from, from Maine. So in summary, we've, we've got a history of partnership. We've removed the deck, which adds three parking spots and reduce seats by eight. We've got an agreement with Black. We're upgrading the facade, and we're working with HBC and the city on, P&amp;Z on that. And the first feedback, if you look at this, this was a kind of a upgrade plus a mural. It's a bit, feedback from HBC is we like it, but it may be a bit loud. We may want to turn it down to more of a sepia kind of, kind of look. But, but the tagline there is, if approved, we'll, we'll absolutely work with the city and P&amp;Z and HBC moving forward. So I guess if I step back and look at all of this, council members, it's been a great, great partnership at all the few, over thirteen years now. I'm, I'm happy to be here. It's, it's been a great investment. I love my tenants. Most of them have been with me for at least a decade. We're under like a community. I have very little turnover. And the deal with Chuck is it's a five-year-plus deal. And I've structured the rates whereby we hope Chuck can make a go of it, and he's committed. So there's, there's not much more I can say, except in the spirit of partnership, in the spirit of Christmas, we hope we'll, we'll get your approval. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Question?
I have some questions about the shared parking agreement. Is, is that an agreement that the tenant is making?
Yes.
And how will the customers know that they can park in Black's parking lot?
We would put, we would put signs up that, that would say, you know, after hours parking reserved for Bull Lion only.
And is this a written agreement?
It is.
And has Black, it's, it's a shared parking agreement. Is it just with this tenant and Black, or have they, do they have a similar agreement with any other companies?
I'm hoping it's only with, with Chuck. But Chuck, the question is, do they have an agreement with anybody else?
What was your answer? I'm sorry. Can you come to the mic if you're going to answer questions? I'm sorry, but in order for it to be on the record, we need you at the podium. Sorry about that. It's just it won't record properly, sir.
No, I don't, I don't believe Black has made an agreement with anyone else. And I'm the only one that's ever approached them. That's what, what I was told.
Okay, so nights and weekends, you'll have the exclusive parking?
I will have additional parking after hours. They close at 5:30, I believe. And they're not open Saturday and Sunday.
Okay, thank you.
Just a second. And that's in the documentation here.
Yep.
I think. Some, again, the hours of operation of the winery?
The hours of operation of the winery, of your winery.
My hours of operation?
Yep.
Same hours. I think we're open till about eleven o'clock on Friday and Saturday. We're closed at seven on Monday to, Monday to Thursday and Sunday. Pretty much what the wineries around here are doing.
Are you going to put any tables on the sidewalk there, or is it all going to be all contained inside the building?
At this current time, no. The, the plans presented is all for indoor seating.
All the inside, inside the building, nothing on the sidewalk?
Oh, inside.
No other questions?
Questions from council?
Now, I'd like to say that I, I appreciate the fact that you took our comments to heart when we met the last time and came back. We were very concerned about the patio area and some other things. And the parking, obviously, was an issue. And I like the new facade. I think that looks much better. And obviously, this is a business we entice to come to Grapevine. We'd like to keep our wineries here. So you've met all my concerns. I, I think it's, I think you've done a good job.
Thank you, Ms. Phil.
The parking agreement with Black, in the written document, can you tell us exactly when the hours that your patrons can use their parking? Because to my knowledge, Black's is open on Saturday.
No, they're not.
They're not? Not anymore?
Not anymore.
Okay. I guess that takes care of that one.
The letter says from Monday to Friday after 5:30, and Saturday and Sunday.
All right. Okay.
The, we, we can submit this if.
Okay.
It's in, it's in the packet.
Okay. The, you have a written comment in here that you will seek approval from the Historic Preservation Commission for the proposed facade improvements. Have you spoken with Mr. Clemmen with the, he's our Historic Preservation Officer. Have you had any dialogue with him yet about this?
Yes, ma'am.
You have? All right.
Yes.
And so you're going to be working with him or making application with him to go to HPC? What is the process there? If I could direct my question to our staff member, Mr. Clemmen, please.
Yes. That, we've already observed these elevations. They've shared them with, with us. I actually even made some comments on it about these awnings and keeping the original concrete awning that was there. No need to really change that up because that's the nature of, that's the history of that building. So we, we've already talked with them. This, this design is in keeping with the, the history of that building.
Okay, so he does.
And so we're, we're okay with it. Our, we gave them a verbal feeling about that. But the process would be, it would still come before us just to ratify this.
Formalize it.
That they do approve of this. That's what, that would be the step that would be taken.
All right, very good. So Nandu, then, could you stipulate as part of this case that you would be making application to go before HPC, say, within the next sixty to ninety days? Could you agree to that?
Say that again, Miss Spence. Maybe, maybe I'll just repeat the question that I'm committing to go before HPC on.
That you would make application to go before HPC within the next ninety days?
Absolutely, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And that all seating will be inside the building. All seating will be inside the building?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, very good. Thank you. Yeah, one of my questions was to make sure that the facade is done before or as soon as possible. Because sometimes they get the use, and then we don't get the rest of the promise. So we just really want to make sure that you make that application as soon as possible. So this is beyond a CA. Since they have to do the awnings and stuff, it will go through HPC. Is that correct, David? Okay. Any other questions?
I had one. So this is for the westernmost, or sorry, easternmost suite of that building. Are the current users in the middle and the westernmost suite remaining as is?
The, the center is still vacant, Chris. The, the western end is, is occupied by a photographer. It's kind of a third, a third, a third. So all Chuck's taking is eleven, eleven hundred square feet of the east side.
Okay, so that stays. And then are you continuing to market the middle suite out for somebody else to use?
Yes. It's, it's been tough sledding, but yes, it's on the market.
Okay.
I also noticed that right in front of the space where Bull Lion's going to be, the sign has reserved parking for a different tenant. Is that going to stay there? It's on the window where those two public, those two parking spaces are, right there as you pull in. They might not be the first one, but there's at least two there that say reserve for, for tenant.
Yeah, so the, the way divided up, Ms. Reed, is the three suites. So it's two, two, and Chuck will get three. So they'll be designated for Bull Lion only.
Okay.
Either, either on the, what do you call it, the bump strip?
Right.
Or, I think with the mural, it, it may not work. But the bump strip will say Bull Lion only.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Just a comment that I just wanted to thank you for listening to what we, what everybody had to say at the last meeting. I, I like the idea, I like how you're going to change the outside of it. I know, I remember Councilmember Lial was concerned about driving traffic down College to actually come to your shop, which makes sense. I think the, what you're doing to the outside is going to kind of more activate that, that side. And I'm glad Chuck's going to have the ability to stay in Grapevine. And, because he has created a following that enjoys his wines. So you have, you have my support.
We, we appreciate it, Ms. Selecta. Yeah, Chuck's built a bit of following. And I think, you know, we, we believe is not a destination winery, is more of a following and the, on the urban wine, wine trail and walk-up. Yeah, so thank you for your support.
Any more questions? Go ahead, Larry. Just, just to clarify, this, this letter, is this the actual parking agreement or just a letter signifying that you have a parking agreement?
A letter, we do have a parking agreement.
Okay. But the letter is just, but I'm just concerned because this is signed by a service advisor for Black as opposed to someone?
Well, I met the new owner.
Okay.
Actually, about, new owner from Oklahoma. I met the new owner from Oklahoma who purchased Black about, in April, I believe. And he said, "Fine. This, this man can, can sign off on it."
Okay, but, but this isn't the actual parking agreement?
At the current time, this is what we have.
This is what we have at this time.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I do think she makes a good point because it's not going to be an agreement in perpetuity that you can just have forever. So I don't know whether we tie the agreement to it or what we do. I mean.
It doesn't sound like it's a legal document to me, as our city attorney.
Put a contingent on it.
Yeah.
That's all you need to do, and it'll be fine.
Mr. Boyle?
Yeah, the zoning approval can be contingent upon a parking agreement with Black as reflected in the letter.
I would agree with that. What do you think, Sharon?
Yeah, we need something that stand up in court. Yeah, yeah, we need a legal agreement.
Make that happen.
Do we have any letters or petitions, or anybody registered to speak?
No, none. No one registered to speak, or no letters, of course.
Okay, thank you. I know I said the opposite. Any more questions from the Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Oliver?
No, thanks.
Okay. Need a motion to close the public hearing, please. Or anything else from the applicant? You guys good?
No, we're good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Oliver?
Need a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Need a motion from the council, please?
Close.
Second.
In favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Back to you, Mayor.
All right. Item seven. Public hearing is open on AM twenty-three dash O two B. Erica Maronic.
On November first of this year, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a workshop to discuss further regulation of electric vehicle charging stations in the city. The intent of the original ordinance that was adopted in January of this year was for EV charging stations to serve as a secondary use, supporting an existing permitted primary use on a property rather than functioning as a standalone use on a property. In order to align with this intent, an amendment is proposed to each of the seven zoning districts where EV charging stations are permitted through approval of a conditional use request. This amendment will add a limitation to subsection D of each respective section stating that EV charging stations are only allowed as a secondary use on a platted lot with an existing permitted primary use. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions or with respect to the requests.
We have questions? No questions, sir?
You've spent a lot of time on this.
Yes.
And we really appreciate the work and where you've gotten with, for, for all of us. Anyone else?
It needed the detail and the clarification, and I really appreciate you making sure that happened.
Do we have anyone wishing to speak?
No, Your Honor.
Any correspondence?
No, Your Honor.
All right. Mr. Chairman, y'all have anything further?
No, sir. Need a motion to close the public hearing.
Close.
Second.
All in favor? Unopposed.
Commission's closed.
Close.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is closed. Public hearing is open on AM twenty-four dash O four. Ms. Maronic.
On July second of this year, the Planning Services provided a status update regarding amendments to the zoning ordinance, which included ten bills as well as cleanup and clarification items related to recent legislative sessions from the eighty-sixth, eighty-seventh, and eighty-eighth state legislative sessions. These amendments have been fully drafted and discussed with the Planning and Zoning Commission during their workshop on November first, and then most recently during their November meeting, when we requested to call a public hearing. We are requesting the city council and the Planning and Zoning Commission favorably, favorably, excuse me, consider the proposed amendments. And if you'd like me to go through those, I can, or I can save you the time. It's up to you. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Chairman, you have any final?
Anybody have questions? Any questions here? No questions?
Commission has no further questions. Does the council have any?
Yes, sir.
Do we have anyone wishing to speak?
No, sir.
Any correspondence?
No, Your Honor.
Need a motion to close the public hearing.
To close.
Second.
All in favor?
The commission closed. A motion from the council.
Move to close.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. That completes the joint meetings. The P&amp;Z will now separate and go to the right to that meeting room. It's a public meeting. You're invited to attend. The council will remain here with citizen comments.
That's perfect. The ten-year-old's got a lot. But she still looks her for the worst. Here's something? I believe in all of it. And I'm so excited to hear it.
Do we have any citizen comments?
I do not, Your Honor.
Anybody here wishing to speak under citizen comments? All right. Then we'll go to item ten to consider a contract for consulting services to craft a comprehensive strategy for the redevelopment and reimagination of the Crossroads District. Garvin, you have a proposal to make?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. I'm here to discuss an initiative that represents a pretty significant step forward in revitalizing the Crossroads District, the area at 114 Zaxus Road and William D. Tate Avenue. It's an area that's been a focus for my department pretty much since day one, when I was made director. So this has been something that's gotten a lot of attention from our staff. The Crossroads District enjoyed a lot of success years ago. There's, you know, large crowds, nationally-recognized restaurants. But however, in recent years, it's been faced with many, several challenges that have hindered its growth potential. My department took a closer look at it to kind of identify what the actual issues were and find ways to help from our, from City Hall, essentially. So one of some of the challenges that we identified, this was done from a combination of surveying, you know, existing business owners, placert, AI data, just cell phone tracking information. We did a lot of analytics on this. Low visibility and limited signage was definitely one of the biggest ones that came up during an ownership group, function that we had with the ownership there. The, the very existence of vacant structures really hurts the, the possibility of redeveloping. Outdated development pattern. This is something that was more suited to the nineties or the early two thousands, and the market has changed, honestly. Brand exhaustion was actually one of the main things that we found, more so than even just the highways rerouting. It was more the fact that several of the brands aged out at the same time. Insufficient lighting is one that comes up a lot, and that kind of ties into the lack of pedestrian circulation as well. Essentially, people don't feel safe walking around there. So there are several things that are weighing this center down. Some of them are things that have happened from the market. Some of them are external. For example, the highway construction I mentioned, the effects of COVID-19. This center has been hit hard by a lot of different things. We have several businesses there that are still doing a really great job and working really hard. And, and they're working against things that are. really hard, but they're working against things that are holding them back. So one of the things that I want to make sure to recognize that I'm optimistic about the future of this center. There is ways to, there are ways to bring it back and to make it better and to give it a hand up to what it needs to be. With the announcement of the nearby Hilton Hotel, this is really kind of a pivotal moment in the area's development. This new construction is going to spur a lot of interest, a lot of, we've already gotten calls from the empty buildings nearby, people trying to figure out what the situation is there. And it's my belief that we must be proactive in laying the groundwork for this district's transformation going forward. So in that spirit, that's why tonight I'm recommending this partnership with the Mesa Design Group to help us develop a comprehensive vision and a proposed plan of action for the area. To be clear, this is to essentially develop the Phase 1 planning part of it, where we'll discuss options with the ownership group, with council. This is the beginning of the discussion. Slide 3. So this, the contract cost, the $54,500 there at the top. Mesa is a trusted partner who's previously worked with the Grapevine Parks and Rec Department on both the Rockledge and the Meadowmere Parks. They bring the right combination of a creative design but with a responsible pricing. Their proposal includes several key elements designed to address the challenges of the center. In particular, the development, some of the things that they're proposing, some of their ideas that they have is the development of new signage, cohesive branding, area lighting, the inclusion of a ride share stop, public art. There's also a really, there's a big emphasis on the active collaboration with the ownership groups. My staff's already met with all the owners of that group, which there are many. I think there are eight different entities in that group. We had a luncheon with them earlier this year and essentially got kind of everyone in the same room, and everyone is in agreement on kind of what they want to see the end result of it to be. So organizing that effort and getting buy-in from everyone, that'll be an important part of this process. Pedestrian-focused circulation enhancements, whether that sidewalk enhancement or widening, lighting, things like that, we feel like that's an important part of it. And the design concepts and renderings, which will be reviewed by council. So that's kind of the highlights of the points that they are proposing. This initiative represents an opportunity for collaboration between the city and the property owners. It's about creating a vibrant, accessible space that reflects the community's values and aspirations, not just about putting, you know, lipstick on a pig. It's about really changing some of the fundamental issues that are going on here and helping them kind of be what they can be again. This is essentially, like I said, Phase 1 of our plan. This is the first step to starting the discussion about what this could be, and Mesa is the partner that we've chosen to go forward with. So we recommend the approval of this contract so we can get that process started and hopefully see our way to a renewed Crossroads area. Joe Stephs and Stan Cowan are both here from Mesa, and I am also available for questions at this time.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
What is the timing of the contract? I mean, how long is it anticipated? Is this six months, eight months, three months? Do you have an idea?
It's approximately six months. We have a deadline of July 2025. So, but the actual timeline schedule for month to month is designed to be flexible, especially because getting 20 people in the ownership group all together at the same time is a challenge.
And the only other thing, I mean, I really appreciate when I found out today that they've worked with the Parks Department, so I know that they've had good experience in the city working with this particular consultant. So I'm fine with that. I think the important thing for me is I think you're going to, it would serve us better not to be communicated at the end as counsel, but really be kept in this process because we might have tweaking ideas as we go forward. So to get it done the way you really want it to be done and for them to do the consulting job that they need to do that will be acceptable to the city. We're not always easy with consultants, in case you didn't know.
Sure. That is a specific part of the proposal. There are city council meetings designated in the proposal, so you're absolutely a part of this process.
Thank you.
And what exactly are the deliverables in terms of, in six months, they're going to come to us with conceptual ideas of, I mean, some concrete ideas? Or is it, I mean, are we then, we go another six months? Or I'm just curious what you've asked them to deliver?
The idea is that they're going to be the facilitators for a lot of this, a lot of the meetings that get set up with the ownership, with staff, with city council, and to create a menu of options, essentially. Because at the end of the day, what I'm envisioning is that we're going to have buy-in from the ownership groups as well. They've all suggested that they're ready to put money into it, even if it's for the good of the center, it's not necessarily for their property. Everyone's willing to contribute to it. But we need to be able to say, okay, these are your options. This is what we think. Get the, have a consensus from them, have a consensus from council, have a consensus from staff. There's going to be a lot of consensus building in this initiative. But I think the thing that helps us is that everyone wants the same thing. Everyone looks at that center and they remember how great it used to be, and they know that it can be that good again. So that really smoothes a lot of edges, honestly. But yeah, that'll be the idea, is a menu of options that at the end of it, what we get agreement on is what we'll move forward with.
I think you bring up a really good point, that this really needs to be a facilitation effort that's, you know, herding the cats of all the different owners that are involved in this to bring something cohesive together that, you know, not only is something that we think looks good and is a good idea and beneficial for the community, but it's something that they're all willing to move forward with, with their little piece of the puzzle.
Absolutely.
I mean, and I think part of that is, you know, upgrading part of the properties, some of the things, like you mentioned, sidewalks, lighting, that kind of stuff, which are eminently doable, but, you know, finding the right tenant mix, you know, and some of those buildings probably need to be replaced. I mean, does it even go as broadly as thinking about realigning Crossroads Drive? Or is that pretty much a linchpin?
So we've had discussions of that. Essentially, Crossroads Drive is the only thing that the city really owns. The rest of it, you know, there's text rail roads all around it. They have a little bit of road work that we can do. Maybe there's some construction widening that could, or I'm sorry, sidewalk widening that could occur, but it's still preliminary stage. It's something that we're hand in hand with other departments and City Hall. Planning's been on these meetings. It's essentially, we're not going to get ahead of our skis here. We know what we can and can't do. By the time we get to the point where we're actually proposing, what's going to happen?
Text not in the mix at all?
No. It's essentially an insular initiative. But I will say...
Eventually, that has to happen.
Yeah, I figured, yeah. We have had several of them say, you know, it's not, you know, I know at least one of them essentially said, hey, if we want to put a sign up that had other tenants on it and put it on my property, that's fine. Like, I'm open to that and ready to do that because they see the benefit of the crossroads rising is going to help them individually too. Everyone wants that area to look better, and they're all, I think, motivated.
Two things. There are several items in here for the various tasks that have deliverables cited. Will we be seeing those deliverables along the way? Or is it going to be nothing before us at all until the end?
I think updated reports would be appropriate, so absolutely.
Okay, so we'll be seeing some of the deliverables?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And you mentioned something a minute ago about the Phase 1. This is Phase 1.
I'm using that casually. Mostly, this is the first step to plan it, and then the next part of it will actually be carrying out the construction. So I just wanted to be clear, we're not approving any dirt moving tonight. This is just about hiring Mesa to help us figure out the plan going forward.
Okay.
Presenting to the ownership groups.
Yes, sir.
But it needs to come to us before it gets presented to the ownership.
Well, they're all going to be working together.
To a lot of people.
Yeah, I think it goes, it goes both directions. Because the ownership groups need to be involved in coming up with the program before we even see it. Otherwise, it's kind of a moot point, right?
We're going to have a lot of meetings, but they're going to be all for the right reason, so.
And so back to my question about Phase 1.
Yes, ma'am.
This is the design, and so you're thinking that Phase 2 may be construction, and then there may be other phases. And this is a $54,000 and a half contract right here with a possible additional optional services of another $20,000. Before, that will have to come back before us, before that money is committed.
Yes, ma'am.
Because of the amount. And I don't know what all, I see the list in here, but I can't really tell what that might be. So this could go on for a while, and the cost can go up, but we've got to do something.
We want to make sure we do, yes, ma'am. We want to make sure we do the job right. We're going to make sure that we check under every rock and do it right. But we also understand there's some urgency to this as well. I mean, we've had restaurants close out there in recent years. The hotel was a, we're very happy about the hotel being there, but they're still in trouble out there. We want to help as soon as we can.
And we want to help too, but the bank accounts not endless.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'm excited that you've been able to get all the ownership in one group, together.
Yep.
And I think everybody working together between us and them, you know, all boats rise, and I think we're going to be able to work together and save that entire area.
Yes, sir.
You worked really hard on it. Thank you.
We had people fly in from out of state to get to that location.
So Garrett, I've got, I've got obviously an obvious question, okay? So you're the economic developing director, you've got a team of people, which is employed by the city, which we really appreciate what you do. So what are they going to bring that you guys either are not doing, should be doing, or you can't do that could help us, help me understand why we're spending a whole lot more money when we've got a team that does that?
Sure. So Mesa does some more technical things that we don't necessarily have the skill set for. They also have a lot of experience with project management like this on this level. We also have a lot of other projects we're working on just for the city in general. This is obviously a really important part of the city. Crossroads is one of our main priorities. We have other parts of the city that demand hours in our day as well. So this is going to be something that's useful to help us kind of figure out the menu of it and figure out the pricing in terms of what is possible and feasible. That's more of a technical question and more of a construction question, which we're less familiar with, but we know that they know the area. We know they know Grapevine. They've done great work with Parks and Rec, so we know they know the area. It just seemed like a natural fit to have them come in and help us do the additional part that we're not necessarily specialized in, but still get the project done.
In terms of working with these owners, I'm assuming that all of this that you're dealing with on Crossroads is not on airport property? Is that correct? Or some of it on airport property?
There is, part of it is on the airport. It's like a triangle of the parking lot of the Hooters. And we, the airport was present at that meeting as well, so even they've been contacted.
Okay. We just have to be careful with...
Sure. That they don't have buildings, so that they are a part of the Crossroads, but they are not a significant portion of it.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Anything else? Thank you much. Consideration is in order.
I'll move for approval, Mayor.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Chairman, you've got the recommendations, the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Conditional use CU 2447 was approved, 7-0.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
In favor? All opposed?